Welcome, everyone. The City Council of the City of Gun Barrel City will meet in a special meeting in City Hall Council Chambers located at 1716 West Main Street, Gun Barrel City, Texas, on Wednesday, September the 3rd, 2025, at 2:00 PM. I will now establish a quorum. Roll call from my left, please.
Evans here.
Jacobs here.
Burson here.
Edwards here.
We have a quorum. Citizens' comments. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551007, members of the public may speak on any topic. Comments are limited to three minutes and no action may be taken by the council. Any response from a member of the City Council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, recitation of existing policy, or direction to staff for follow-up. We have two people to speak on citizens' comments. Our first one, Amara's Faith.
I'm on social media, on Facebook and X, under the handle CityWatchGBC, if you're interested in following. I oppose the proposed budget, and here's why. Information coming from the city manager is verifiably not true. In the '25 budget, she claimed a 7.13% decrease in operating expenses from '24 to '25. I went through every single line item. 7.13% doesn't exist, not in the data she provided to the public. We debunked that $185,000 saving she claimed. In the '26 proposed budget, she claims the team again reduced day-to-day operating costs. Not so. If I leave out labor and capital outlay, day-to-day costs actually rise 13%. If I keep it all in, it still rises 1%. This excludes the community center. In '25, under accomplishments, she lists, wait for it, court cases and police calls going up. Those aren't accomplishments. They're failures. They're symptoms of something terribly wrong in this community. In the '26 budget, the accomplishment of the year? Activating the park. Not fixing the flooding on Legendary Lane, not building a cross-street to reduce traffic congestion on Main Street, not putting in fire hydrants or streetlights, but activating the park for the Maybank Church League to use. Again, one of her accomplishments? Police calls and traffic stops are going up. More domestic violence? Yay, more money. More children being molested? Yay, more money. More people being attacked by dogs? These are not wins. They are failures of the highest order. And they're so insignificant to the city manager and the police chief, they only need to work 36 hours a week now, not 40. Ms. Burns can laugh about finding a dollar to spend. Ms. Jacobs can brush it off as if she doesn't have time. The mayor can whip up all the positivity he wants. Mr. Edwards? Good engineers follow data. They understand failure rates. We have failure rates here. The 90% failure rate of an employee policy, the failure of a budget to match the city manager's narrative, the failure rate from police calls and court caseload increasing. I oppose a budget that reflects warped priorities, denies citizens the truth, and rewards the wrong people. Thank you.
Next up, Cheryl Lynn Kelly.
I ditto everything and agree with everything that Amara's has just said. I oppose the budget for the same reasons. In that budget is animal control. I have discovered this last week that there are dead cats, missing cats. There are ferals. But I have been taking care of these ferals, catch and release and fixing. We need somebody out there to find out what's going on with these cats in Willowood and in Arbolato. That doesn't seem important to you, but it's important to me to find out what's going on in our neighborhood. Is it contagious or nefarious? Thank you.
Next. New business? For a discussion regarding the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. I'd like to make a few comments again. I've heard a lot of information and nefarious information and what have you. I'm going to ask, at this point in time, since there is a group that supports Mr. Burson and Ms. Evans on their opposing of the budget. Ms. Faith, I'm so sorry you weren't here to hear my rendition of your letter that you sent to us. It was very good. But I would also ask Mr. Burson at this time, what is it that you and Ms. Evans are looking for to make this budget work?
Rita, you want to speak, or you want me to speak?
No, you're first.
Well, first thing is, is this is unsustainable at the rate we're going. We're looking at...
Okay, I get that. What I'm asking for and what I'm looking for, I don't want any rhetoric. I'm going to cut to the chase today, okay?
You want to ask what I'll pass?
No. What I want is, I don't want to hear what it is. I want to hear the solution. We've already said what it is a million times. I want a solution, and I'll stop you every time till I hear an actual solution. Now, continue.
You might want to speak.
At your point of order, Chief, I'm going to ask you one more time like that. I need to have that removed.
So you want to know...
I need a solution. So a solution would be, we're not going to, we're not going to give them the raises. We're going to do this.
Okay.
We're not going to do this. We're going to do that.
Okay.
I don't want to hear that it's, we're all going to fall off a cliff in 10 years.
Very good. I will support a flat-line budget with funding for the recreation coordinator, put a hiring freeze, and, and, and no to the one-stop pay raise, pay jump till mid-budget. We look at it at that time and then make some decisions. That's what I, that's what I'll pass on.
Rita?
Same thing. I'm not passing the budget the way it is.
So basically, all they want is no raises. That's all you want.
That's all you want.
Nobody gets any raises, then?
That's what you want.
We're going to be stuck here. We're going to sit here through all of these meetings until we all agree that nobody's going to get any raises. That includes the police department, our city staff, everybody. Okay. Okay.
I think at this time...
I, can, can I say something real quick?
Yes, absolutely.
So, we start these budget meetings months in advance for this exact reason. Because inevitably, every time we get to this point of actually passing the budget, we can have great meetings and great conversations, and everybody agrees on everything, and yes, this is the direction that we want to go. But then, as soon as we get to the meeting where we have to actually pass the budget, this is what they do every single time. So there's, it's, it is extremely frustrating, because these are the conversations that we should have had four months ago. Four months ago, we could have had this conversation, Jay.
And I did, and what I tell you, the last...
You're a liar.
The last budget meeting, I told you, no.
Not the last budget meeting?
Yes, I did.
What about four months ago, when we started these conversations? That was, the last meeting was like a week...
Point of, Chief, can you help me, please? One more, and, and you're going to be asked to leave, okay? It's a point of order in here. You guys have every opportunity, if you, if you want to run for office, please do.
It's, it's just a game. They, they sit up here and they play games.
God bless you. God bless you. So, just remember, I, I find this, again, very ironic, because the council that sat here last year was made up of you, Mr. Foster, and Ms. Evans, but down here, Ms. Faith says, quote, end of quote, "Y'all sold the farm out from underneath us last year."
And you did the same thing last year. You, at the last minute, you didn't want to...
Can I speak on that behalf?
Just saying what was said.
Can I speak on that behalf? I mean, you're making a statement, but you're not giving the full truth. That's a half-truth. I'm reading from the... That's what it was, but why did we, but why did we go that way? Why did we go that way? Because we were told that we couldn't make our budget, so we went to a, we went to a modified work schedule, okay? Went to a modified work schedule, and it was supposed to be saving us all this money.
Who approved, who approved of that? Did you vote yes for that budget or not?
Because I didn't know at the time.
Hey, that's not what I asked you. This is what, this is what you all do. It's a yes or no.
That's a yes or no question, Jay.
Did you vote yes or no? Did you vote yes or no?
I voted yes, and I just told you...
Thank you. Rita, how did you vote last year? Yes or no?
Yes, I was...
Okay, thank you. All right, now, what we're going to do is, now I'm going to turn this over to our city manager for the further discussion. I think we have some numbers that will back up the, some of the nefarious things that have been said earlier, and will discount some of the stuff that's going on out there.
I am happy to answer questions if anybody has questions. I did not bring a prepared presentation. I have a lot of information here.
I do have one. Okay, so, Jay, can you give me the name of the, you refer to this town all the time in their budget? What is the name of that town?
Town is Toya, Texas.
Okay.
Toya? Toya.
Okay. So if you don't mind, we're going to just take a moment...
Yes, sir.
And we're going to look this up, okay?
Okay.
And so, we're going to compare apples and apples.
Sure.
I have the budget. Let me have Janet pull it up.
Okay, so we have that budget.
Yeah, because the last, last meeting, and the last meeting we had here was, you incited fear in everybody that we weren't going to be able to make our budget, but your family member, their budget was way less, their staff was way less, and that we would never be able to sustain what we have. We need to be more like what your family member had. Is that correct?
Well, I can just, yes, yeah, let me, let me tell you why. Because they have a garbage, they do all the utilities, they do all the water, they do all the sewage, and they have a landfill. And they have 30-something employees.
Are, are they an ad valorem, or are they a tax collector like us?
They have an ad valorem.
Okay. And, so that's, that's not apples to apples. Their city...
Okay.
I mean, the, the amount of people...
Hold on, hold on, just a second.
Here we go. We'll allow Dr. Smith to speak on this, please.
I had Janet pull this budget up. This is the fiscal year '24-'25 approved budget for Toya, Texas. Janet, if you can scroll down, there is their general fund summary. That is, their total revenues are $1,877,412.86. If you'll scroll down, Janet, there's your expenditures. Those are your expenditures by department. The expenditures are $2,556,799.88. You'll scroll down a little further, Janet, and there is the category. So they spend 1.879,414.10 on personnel, which is 73.5% of their budget spent on personnel.
Can we address that?
Sure.
Go ahead.
When you, the first thing is, is the money that's coming in, if you go up, back up to their expenses, I can't see it in front of me, but here's the deal. They also take the money out of their, out of each of those departments and put into the budget, from the water, the sewer, the electricity, and they have 35 employees.
Jay, they may say that. We're looking at these numbers. We're going by these numbers. Let's just stay on task here. Let's just talk...
You got half of the numbers there.
Let's just talk about these numbers.
Okay.
Well, I understand that they may have other avenues of income, but you're comparing, you're, you were the one that brought it in to compare it to our city...
Okay.
And what they spend on employees and personnel, and I'm just...
Okay, okay, is, theirs is a million eight? How much is our personnel?
I, I...
How much is our...
Talking about a percentage of their, your...
No, I want to know what the number...
Our budget isn't the same. So, our personnel is, Mickey, I have that here somewhere, on one of these sheets. Hold on. Gun Barrel City's personnel with raises for 2026 was $4,320,414. We have higher income in 2025. Salary and benefits was $3,935,714. So, for council's knowledge, I did the same with us. If the argument is that other funds fund this, Mickey and I, on the very last page of the proposed budget, was a fund budget. So, we took, what was our fund balance in, at the, currently, by the financials that you guys get each month that are put on our website? What was our current fund balance, along with any money we potentially would take in this year, and figured out our personnel based on that? And I'll give you this. We did not do, before I get up, we did not do all of our funds. We simply did funds that we will budget to spend money out of the next year. So we took street sales tax. That wasn't included in y'all's original numbers with the 78%. Public enhancement, court security, hotel motel, court technology, court time payment, festival, and the 380 agreement. And so, we took all of those, if you want, yeah, take one, let me have some of that, some other stuff. And, so, we took that. So if we take all of that, and what we have in our fund balance, plus what we project to bring in in 2026, we really have a $7.8 million budget, and our personnel at that point is 58.85. So, this is based off the financials for July. Am I correct, Mickey? The financials that just got posted, plus what we predict. We took out donation accounts, because that is just that. It's a donation account. So on the very last page of your budget report, you see there, we took out Leo's funds, because that is not money that we can guarantee that we get every year. We took out special funds. And so, this is the budget that's the very last page, that is special funds. What was the balance in June of 2025? What do we expect to spend in fiscal year 2026? What are the legal uses of that? So, I mean, the same argument could be made. I can take all of those funds, too, and say, hey, we have all this, street sales tax alone is the balance to, in June was, uh, hold on. Mickey, do you have the balance? I have it. I have 900 sheets of paper. The balance in June for street sales tax alone was $693,540. That's all supplies that our staff have to manage and do the work with. So I can make that same argument with the city of Toya, if you want me to make that. We took general fund to general fund, but we didn't overspend our budget like Toya did either, right? They, they, they budgeted more than they brought in and then took money out of reserves. You all did that until two years ago, when I recommended to you to quit taking money out of your reserves and your capital improvement unless you had to. We were budgeting $300,000 a year out of our general, out of our reserves. We can continue to do that, and I'm happy to spend more money.
We're literally being even more conservative than we have in the last several years.
Which is why I asked you to do that, yes.
And we are being held hostage by, but based on a town in West Texas that is not close to Dallas, that is not close to Tyler, that has an ad valorem, it has nothing to do with what Gun Barrel is, it doesn't take into account what Gun Barrel needs. You don't even come to the meetings with our, our city manager on a monthly basis to find out what it is we're doing here in the city. So you are, you are talking to a city on the other side of the state to make your decisions about Gun Barrel. How asinine.
Well, I will say this. If you're going to choose that particular one, choose a good one. I mean, 58 and 75 are pretty far apart. I mean, I, I mean, we're doing pretty good. Maybe Toya needs to come here. I can sit and visit with him, make him part of my mayor's coalition, help him out if he wants. What we're going to do is, we're going to move forward, okay?
Yeah, but the only choice that they're saying is, the only choice that they have is no, so y'all think saving the, what's, how much was it for the raises? $65,000, $75,000 is what's going to save this city? Is that correct, between the all two? That's what it's going to take?
That's what it is.
We've cut, we've cut over $50,000 out of the convention center and got it down to 1, to 105. Is that correct, Angie?
I don't know what the question is.
No.
The, the raises is $71,257.
So that's what y'all want? That's what it's going to take, is to save the city, is to not give raises to the employees?
I didn't say save the city. Y'all are putting dramatics in this.
That's what you're wanting to do, because you're thinking that that's what it's going to be, because you don't want to overspend, which we're not, but that's what you're thinking is going to be the best interest of the city, is to save that $71,000 for the employees and not give them a raise.
And wait till mid-budget, because we cut, we've cut, our new jewel is supposed to be the civic center, or the community center, and we started at 150, which we agreed to, and it's down to 105 or something.
We didn't change the, we didn't change the community center budget.
What is it? We started at 150.
It's still 150.
Oh, it's 150?
It has not, the community center budget...
You're visiting the same meetings we are, yes. It didn't change.
Let's see what's in the budget.
The community center budget has not changed from the initial, which is 105 to 26.
Oh, it started at 150. That's what we originally started at.
I don't know where that, I don't know. It never changed.
I would have to go back to a few different ones, but it did have, now, at mid-year, it had part of this year and part of next year, so that would have probably been about right. Next year's fiscal year 2026 budget, and it has not changed. Mickey, we have not amended the community center budget at all since day one for, for fiscal year 2026.
We tweaked the payroll...
The payroll numbers, but minor, has been 105 to 26. So, at mid-year, you all saw a budget for a portion of 20, we weren't sure when it was going to open. So we thought it could open as early as August. We tweaked that at mid-year for you to see a portion of, like, we've already bought software, even though it's not open. So we put in about $9,500 at mid-year, if you remember, to potentially hire some staff. Now, as I mentioned to y'all, Brooke has agreed to take that on until we really get our feet wet and hear what you want to do with it and, and all of that, but since, I would have to go back and look at every rendition. There have been about 10, so I would have to go back and look at every rendition, but as proposed at the last meeting, the community center budget is...
105.
105.
Right, so our payroll is at 58.86% for the city. But again, I just want to make sure that that's what y'all think is best for the city, is just not to give raises.
I don't agree with that number, but okay. But the problem, the, here's, here's the whole scenario. If y'all want to do this, that's fine, but I'm not going to vote for it.
Well, I know, but we have to, but that's the whole point, right? Is we have to figure out what you're going to vote for, because y'all are two, one of the, y'all are two, one of the two that are holding...
You want this budget with nothing for the police and fire and, and the city of employees?
No, no, no. I'm telling you that we have, this, the economy is still on the edge. I've been on the lake. I've seen what the numbers are. The numbers are not like they were last year. And so, what I'm saying is, is to be conservative. We can keep the money in the bank account, and we get to mid-budget, we can...
So you're saying, don't give anybody a raise. You're, you're telling Chief Stevens, him and his people can't have anything.
That is correct.
Now, you're telling everybody here...
I didn't get a raise.
Well, we do this out of the kindness of our heart, Jay. Jay, we are not paid employees.
I'm here...
We are volunteers for this city.
Let me explain something to you. I work, I work for the people that voted me into office. Okay, I don't work for City Hall.
Let's stop with that now, Jay, because when we were discussing the EDC director, you chose to sit out of that, being very, as I quote, courageous by not fulfilling your obligation to be a part of that.
Working for the city, Jay.
And also, just hold on, point of order. That's your obligation, is to sit in those meetings and sit in executive session, and if you have a problem with that, that's your time to express that. To sit out here and say, I'm just not going to be a part of that, that's not fulfilling your obligation.
Okay, let me state that. Here's the deal. I had already called council, and I said, do I need to go in there? Because there was things that were being said about, about...
Of course, everyone's going to say that.
Let me finish, please. I didn't interrupt you.
You have, several times.
If, if this is not about the budget, we can't talk about the executive session.
Okay, so now, now what we're going to do, now what we're going to do, well, this all pertains to the budget.
Mayor, can I, can I make one statement? I have the, the financials that were just posted for May, June, for May, June, and July. Last year in May, it was for, this is general fund sales tax. Last year was 405,873.71. May was 407,023.87, so a $1,200 increase. June of '24 was 347.8912. June of '25 is 395,0956. July of '24 is 359,209.22. July of '25 is 369,867.32. So, we are definitely not seeing a downfall in our sales tax revenue. We just budgeted conservatively.
So, let's start with this. Your first thing was flat-line budget. Explain that to me in detail.
Do you not know what it is?
I know exactly what it is. I want to hear it out of you. I need this on the record, please. Thank you.
Okay. A flat-line budget means we go back to last year's number?
Okay, last year's number was said, we, we sold the farm out from underneath everybody. So you want to go back to last year?
I'm not going to, I'm, I'm not going to have a conversation if you're going to be that way.
A flat-line budget is what? Last year's budget?
I already told you what I was going to do. I'm done.
Okay. What is, no raises, so no raises, and then the last thing you said was freeze on hiring. And explain that to me in specifics.
Mickey, what was the total of last year's budget? Do you have that in front of you? We can grab that. I believe there was... And the total of this year's budget is...
5,6,7,8.
Oh, so it's less than what it was last year. Oh.
With the raises, with the community center.
Wow.
If we do a flat-line budget, then that means no community center.
Let's do that, Jay. I agree. Let's do that.
Well, you know what? Obviously, that's telling you that the revenue has come down.
No, but that, that's not based on revenue. A budget is...
No, because we didn't move the money that we would have into...
That's, that's budget to budget. That's not actuals to budget. That's budget to budget.
Correct. We're being, what she's saying is that we're trying, we're being more cautious about the money, and not putting those, and made cuts in different areas to bring the overall budget down by still increasing salaries and still gaining on community center. Because there was also other charges in the '24-'25, is that what your budget were, that had other things that we were buying or needing that we won't need this year. So a flat-line budget, I don't understand how that actually makes sense, being when there are things that were in there that are no longer needed, or repaired, or fixed, or, so how do, how can I keep the budget exactly the same?
I already told you I'm voting. I'm not going to heed...
I know, but we're, we're not here to sit here and say, I'm, I'm against it. It's here to say, tell me what it's going to take to get it. And my question again is, if we don't give raises, is that what you're saying? And then you're going to vote yes? We, we got to figure out a way to pass the budget. That's what we're up here to do, is to pass a budget.
I will, I will support a flat-line budget with funding for the rec coordinator, hiring freeze, and no, a, a, a no-one-step pay raise. Just stop that until mid-budget, and then when we get to mid-budget, we'll look at it at that time.
So does flat-line budget mean last year's budget? What we did last year?
That's the challenge with the-
Y'all are playing tag.
No, Rita's shaking her head. Hold on.
Yeah, last year's fine budget is fine.
Rita's shaking her head yes, so she must think that that means the same.
So, so there were capital improvements that we paid for last year. You want those included?
You go by the charter.
Right, which means no community center.
No.
Yeah, because you said if I go to a flat-line budget, the community center is not in the budget, so therefore I can't do anything with that.
We can move the community center. That's fine with me.
That's what you're saying, well, that's what you're saying. You're fine with that?
Yep, sure.
So there's nothing that we can do that we're gonna be able to pass the budget because they're not willing to move forward with Gumbel with us.
Community center.
They want no community center, no raises, no, that's what they want, and she's shaking her head yes. That's what they want.
Is that back to buying three police cars again? Because that was in last year's budget.
Yeah, that's in last year's budget too, so we get to buy three more police cars?
Yep.
You, you can't say no, Rita. That was in last year's budget.
No, I'm talking about the revenue and, well, if you read the charter, and I guess you can just, whatever you want to say, it just says, "If you don't pass the budgets this year, you just continue with what you got last year."
Right, which means I buy three cars.
Whatever you wanna do. You wanna buy them, buy them.
It, so, yes, that's what the charter says, but it is not practical for the next six months to operate off of the numbers for the la, for the last year's budget. That is not a practical outcome.
So you guys are against the community center too?
We're against everything regardless.
Okay. So no community center, no raises.
We wanna make good choices for Gumbel City. They just wanna play games. They wanna get attention. They wanna cause drama. This isn't about making healthy, solid decisions for Gumbel. It's not.
And that's evident in their answers that they give.
Yep.
And if there's nothing else we can do, if they're not willing to, to try to do what's best for Gumbel, there's nothing else that we, that the rest of us can do. Because they're, I mean, I don't know, we're not, they're not negotiating or reasoning with us to try to find a happy resolution that we're trying to say, "Hey, what's it gonna take? Is it just the no raises?" Nope, evidently that's not it either, so it, I mean, it's just...
But this was my point of all of this. I get that people don't like it, but we've been doing this, we did this with other things too. It, it, we don't like any of this. We go get petitions, but we don't have any solutions. We just don't like stuff, and that's fine. I'm not saying we need to like everything, but come with a solution, and that's what I'm asking for. So your solution, I just wanna make it clear again, is no raises, everything status quo, no community center, no hiring. We go back to last year's budget.
So when you say no community center, you mean no spending on the community center?
Well, it's not, it's not in last year's budget.
No funding for it because it wasn't in last year's budget.
We built the building, and we're just gonna let it sit there and rot. We can't-
That's, that's, because that's what they're choosing to do.
What they're choosing to do.
Awesome.
That is what they're choosing to do. Well, there you have it, folks.
I, if we're gonna coordinate, if we're gonna do, see, y'all are, y'all are running this around in a circle.
No, we're not.
Yeah, you are.
No, we're not. And that's what's sad.
Well, I, I hear, I hear, I hear your stuff, and I hear what you're saying. Every time I make a comment, and then she shuts you down that I can't comment after you make a statement about me. So this is a one-sided game. The whole problem is this. I have no problem funding the city, but what I'm trying to say is, is we, the, the community center needs to be put in there, okay? The two, the three things, we can do the community center, and we can fund the coordinator, but I don't think we need to pay raises, and I think we need to have a hiring freeze till mid-budget, and if we got any extra money at that point, if we need to give a bonus to everybody or whatever we have if we have extra money, but I would rather be cautious because we have a brand-new expenditure, a brand-new building going into this year.
So now we're down to no raises and a freeze on spending. Forget the flat-line.
Yeah, the flat-line budget.
Forget the flat-line budget. We're down to no raises and freeze on hiring.
Is that what you're, are we agreeing to that? If that's what, I guess we agree to?
Make a motion.
It's not, we're not here to make a motion today. Right, but I don't wanna make a motion and you say no. I need to know if that's something that you're, if that's what you agree to. We're here to discuss it, to find resolution.
Well, the community center's behind anyway. It should've been open a couple of months ago, but...
It's not behind. It'll be, October twenty-second was the original due date, and it will be done by that date.
This, this is the problem. We, we, we need to stay with facts. We, stuff's coming out of people's mouths that are very influential. That is just not true. It needs to stop. It's not productive for anyone.
You've known for years, Rita, that October for the community center, October of twenty-twenty-five, that was the goal the whole time, for years.
No, it didn't. Maybe you did, maybe I didn't.
The Gant charts this group has been getting since day one said, I believe it's October twenty-second. I can verify. I'll have to pull it up.
She may not have got the timeline because she wasn't, she's not going to the city manager meetings, and so the timelines, we gave it, we were given a timeline on everything was to be completed, estimated, and even with, um, uh, uh, anyway. Again, the question is, remains, if we, if, if Jay's proposal, if my understanding is correct, correct me, Jay, is no raises and a freeze on hiring, and you would approve, approve a budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, Rita?
Mayor.
We're not voting today. I'm just asking, is that doable, or do, you need something else?
Repeat again.
She, he said no raises and a freeze on hiring. That's it. That's the two, that's all his stipulations are currently if we were to do that, which, you know, I'm not saying I agree with it, but I don't have a choice maybe, but if that was done, are you saying you would agree to that budget?
Well, do you wanna fund the community center, or don't you?
He does. That's why he's agreed to do this.
And he also agreed that we'd look at it in six months, and if there was money, we could go ahead and do it then.
Okay.
All right, so are we done with this discussion?
I do have a question. We have two vacant police officer positions. The longer we, the longer it takes us to fill those, the higher my overtime is, so that's a no-win situation for us in the form of a fire chief, and I believe dispatch is full today. I have one vacancy in dispatch. I have two vacancies in PD, and I have a, a fire chief that is costing me money to not fill. Every day we don't fill them, they're costing us money.
I don't have a problem because they're service, service, in the service industry, I don't have a problem with that.
So now we're down to just no raises?
Everybody in this building is, uh, in the service industry. Everyone in this building is serving the community. That's literally their job.
I have at least two in Parkson Street that will retire between now and January first.
So what do you suggest we do with that? Are we gonna remove the freeze hiring?
I already have their, I already have their retirement letters, so, with their final dates.
Ask Rita. I don't care.
That's a, that's, okay.
All right, Rita, he doesn't care. He doesn't care whether we replace those people or not, or he don't care what the answer is, so what is your answer?
Can I ask a question, Jay? Is your problem with hiring the rec coordinator for the community center, is that what the problem is?
No.
So, so if it's the raises and that one person, let's stipulate that one person.
I think his, I would think, let me speak from wrong. I think his point is he doesn't wanna increase overall payroll, right? Trying, trying to keep it, and, and I, and I get that we don't wanna hire people just to hire people, and I, and I don't feel that the city does that, because back when we went to the four-day work week, that was one of my stipulations. Okay, but we're not gonna hire someone to fill in if someone's falling behind, right? That, that wasn't the deal, so...
Which we didn't do. So, but, but on the, on the other side of that, if we do a hiring freeze on the community center, the community center is gonna be open from seven-thirty to four-thirty every day, period.
I had no problem with that person.
The, the community center-
I said, "And funding for the rec coordinator."
I gotcha.
Right, but, but we need more than just one person. I mean, here's my thought.
I don't know that I can fund the, I don't know that the rec coordinator, I said that in our last meeting. I don't know that the rec coordinator is the right thing. Brooke has agreed to help out in that position in addition to her full-time job that she already has as community engagement specialist. We may have to hire part-time people. We, that conversation is next on the list of what do you wanna do with the community center, so...
Because depending on how many hours a day and how many days of a week the community center is open, which we have to make that decision, and we may start out, you know, less hours and grow, but, yeah, that's gonna, of course, cause for more employees. And like I said, then we have some park peoples retiring. We got some PD then in dispatch, so I guess I'd...
I know for a fact I have one streets department in October, November, and one, uh, a full, our full-time crew leader in parks retiring in December, so...
Rita, he said he didn't care. Ask you.
Well, I guess you could replace the ones that are retiring.
And what about the ones that are vacant?
I mean, you do have vacant.
She said one P, one dispatch and two PD?
And we have a fire chief.
And a fire chief.
But they're not already in last year's budget.
They are in last year's budget, and they're in the, the new budget.
But if you put a hiring freeze, Rita, if we say that, regardless of their, regardless of their-
Put a hiring freeze, we don't hire a soul.
If they're in the budget or not.
We're just going by what you all said. Flat-line budget, no raises, freeze on hiring. So we're trying to get specific about it.
If, if they're already, if they're already budgeted in, then that's not a hiring freeze. That's hiring another employee over and above.
So you're saying, so basically, just a clarification, you just don't want any, um, I wanna say additional, because there are spaces already available for everybody else, you know, just...
So the only additional spaces in this budget is for one rec coordinator and part-time people at the community center.
Which we have that.
Only new positions in this budget. That is what is required to run the community center.
And it's in the new budget, but not in the old budget.
Those are the only positions in the new budget that are not in the old budget.
And what are your, you said we could look at it in six months. If, if everything goes well, we'll look at it in six months and reevaluate them. So what are you looking for in six months? Because I don't wanna, you know, and you just say, "Oh, well, you know, sorry, it's not where it's at. Sorry, chief." You know, tell the fire, tell everybody else. You know, I mean, what are we looking for in six months to, to approve that for them?
Make sure the revenues are coming in like we're, like they're projected.
The residents or the revenue?
No, I said revenues. When you see the revenues coming in, and we have enough money to run the rec center, and, and it doesn't, there isn't any extra expenditure.
And you will vote yes on that at, at the halfway point?
Well, I will see where we're at, yes.
Okay, if we're at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and here again too, instead of putting it as a reoccurring cost to employees over every year from now on, which is a reoccurring cost, if we have an, I don't know, fifty thousand bucks or twenty thousand bucks, and we wanna give a bonus to everybody that's in manager, or that's, that's, that's the people that are out there on the front lines and whatever, I have no problem doing that, and that's just a one-time payout.
Which is the problem with the way the city, no place works like that. I mean, every now and then you get those, but it never increases their retirement, doesn't increase their raises, doesn't increase their pocketbooks. That is not a place that any person would want to work at. I do not, I mean, yes, have I gotten bonuses in the past and not a raise? Sure, very seldom, very rarely, but you want those raises. They need those raises.
But that's on top of your raises that you get that.
Yes, but he's talking about in place of.
Not, not just as, that's what you're hoping for every year.
Because I wanna get a budget approved, hopefully this next one. So now we're down, of course, we said no raises, and what, I mean, are we saying a freeze on hiring? We removing that verbiage? What, what?
We just keep going over this. You keep talking in a circle. We already said, I'd said no.
No what?
I have a problem with the freeze. I said, I was just saying, no new hires that are not already in the budget.
So can you?
That are not already in what budget?
In, in the budget that we have.
The twenty-twenty-
The twenty-six budget, so there's no other, every, there's no surprise new hires standing in line, right? So this, the purpose of a budget is that we outline exactly what positions and at what rate. So that would, you know, we've got some vacancies. We've got the community center new hires, but they're in this budget that was in your last packet. Um, so I can't, I can't add a position without council's approval anyway, so I don't know. I, I don't know how to answer that question, so...
What do you think, Seesaw?
You guys have, um, in the back of your budget is a personnel schedule. Um, one of the very last pages is your salary schedule. It has all the outlined positions along with, that's their twenty-twenty-six salary with a raise for everybody but me. I did not budget a raise for me. My intention in my September evaluation was not to ask for one. The one sixty-six is my contracted one sixty, plus my car allowance. So that wasn't even included in this budget, so... Although there's been a lot of information about there out there, so do with that what you want.
Point of order. Keith, I'm, I'm done, chief. I really am. God bless you.
So, I mean, I, I just need to understand what no new employees means, because it's clearly outlined in this budget exactly what is budgeted in this budget, and at what rate.
So Angie, tell me when, when a budget is not passed, what happens?
Um, we operate on last year's budget, but we cannot do that for a long period of time because the city has no financial guidance. So we, it, it's intended for, we're still working on it on October, or there's a disaster in October. It's not intended for six months to operate from last year's budget because there's, there's no allocations for anything. There's no payroll. There's no, there's no daily operating expenses.
That means if a, if a grant comes through-
We would have no match.
We don't have any matching funds, uh, to, to go forward. We can't even vote on it. I, anything that comes in front of us, we won't be able to vote on it because we don't have a budget in place, so...
Yeah, so, um, it's intended for one month. We did that last year. You may remember with economic development. They did not get a budget approved in September, so October, we just kind of stayed in line with what we had spent the previous year, but that is not intended to hold over for a long time because you need allocations for the year because not all expenses come in at one time. You take the parks budget. They spend a big part of their budget on materials and supplies from April to October and less during the winter, so it's not intended to carry you over for a long period of time. And if I was a resident, I would be extremely upset if this council couldn't come to an agreement on a budget because truly it doesn't fund anything going forward. It just maintains, at the bare minimum, the operations.
Well, the fire department, their, our budget on twenty-five, twenty-six is less than last year's budget. So I guess we had a chief back then, or the fire marshal.
Yep, that's a hundred percent. So every page of the budget, we spend a significant amount of time looking at. When Joey retired, he retired at one rate. When we hire a new one, Joey had been here twenty-four years, Mickey, twenty years. Um, he still wasn't at the top of his scale, which he should've been, but he retired at, say, a J. We would replace a new person at an A on day one and at a B at the six-month rate, so, um, you know, we don't, we don't take generalizations. That's not how you budget a city budget. You have to have specifics. And so every page of that budget has specifics. Some go up a little bit, some go down, some have changed. Revenues, we predict those based on our current, um, on our, where we are currently, so... If, if at the end of the day, Mayor, it's just don't do raises, I'm happy to go tell that story to my employees.
But if we go to the flat-line budget like, like Jay suggested, which was last year's-
There's not a such thing as a flat-line budget.
It's the same amount, and they still get their raises.
So, so Bobby, there really isn't such a thing as a flat-line budget, because in twenty-twenty-five, we budgeted day-to-day operations. We budgeted capital. We budgeted a number of things. So I would have to understand specifically what a flat-line budget is, and I would need to see those numbers because our revenues aren't flat-lined.
Okay.
I've already told you that some of our revenues, we reduced, so those things aren't flat-lined. It, it's not that simple. A flat-line budget is, this is how much money we said we were gonna spend in twenty-five. This, we're gonna do the exact same thing, and I can do that, but you budgeted three police cars in twenty-five. You may go buy three more, because that's what a flat-line budget does, right? Sometimes you pull capital out, sometimes you don't, but you can't do that because you have a community center that's coming online. You can't say, "Just roll the budget over" because you have a community center. We have said that we know we're going to have some decreases in some areas and some increases in some other areas of revenue, so it isn't that simple. Um, flat-line isn't, isn't a budgetary term because you can't do that from year to year. Um, I do a pretty good job of pulling it all out, and that's where my team starts. Now, some of them made cuts. Some things like Joey leaving made cuts. Um, you know, we've got some long-tenured staff that's gonna retire, that's going to reduce that budget, but today I have to budget at the rate they get paid, and then when that change happens, that change happens. So I've got two very long-term employees who will retire in November and December, and that will affect the budget. That will, we pay them at a certain rate. The new person will come in at a different rate, so that all plays into it. So flat-line budget isn't a thing. You can't just roll over fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six. If the issue is you don't want raises, that's the direction I need, and I'm happy go and deliver that to our employees, and what happens, happens. Um, but just like the economy is changing and the prices of everything are going up, your employees are feeling that impact, and, um, the reality is, it is what it is at that point. So council has to make the decision on the message that you want your city manager to deliver to your employees. But you can't just say, "I want a flat-line" because that doesn't have a definition. That's all great, but that does not have a definition.
Thanks for your explanation.
As your city manager, I need very clear direction on what you wanna do.
Mickey wants to speak.
Sure. So I think an easy thing to do, if you don't wanna give raises next year, is go with this budget as written. I am not giving you advice. I'm just telling you an easy way to do it. Go with this budget as written, the new budget, with stipulations. No raises until mid-year, until we look again, look at it again mid-year. No capital expenditures until mid-year. You can, that way you're not putting us in a month-to-month basis by not approving a budget. We're moving ahead, but you can stipulate what you want us to do with it. Just an idea.
And I would just warn you to be cautious and pay close attention to what's in the budget. That's no, if you say, you know, "I appreciate that, Mickey, but..." If you say no capital expenditures, that's no police computers. That's no fire truck iPads. Those are things that they need to do their job. So you want, we can go- So, you want, we can go back today and take out every raise. I can do that. It's not a problem, we can add them back mid-year. Takes Mickey a while, but we can have that ready before our September meeting, if that's the hang-up. But you can't flatline the budget, because today's revenues and needs do not match where we were one year ago.
I accept that. That's what you're saying.
So. That's a great term, but it doesn't work. So, if, if what council's direction is, is you want the budget as it sits today, less raises, we will make that amendment, and I will bring it back to council in September. But as your city manager, I need some kind of reassurance that everyone is going to approve that, or we're back where we are today, which is looking silly in front of your residents.
And this goes back to what councilperson Jacobs said. We've done this a million times, and everybody will agree to something, and then we get up on the dais when it comes up, and we vote another way. And we're not going to do that anymore. We're just not. So, make sure that you're on record today, and that what you're on record for, you will hold true to when we go to approve this budget in September.
And the statement being made that three of us gets our arm twisted, because we don't have a choice but to agree to no raises, because that is not what we want for our, for our city employees, that it's not what we want for them.
And when we have the discussion part of that.
Because then when PD's, is already low as it is, and you're not giving them raises, I mean, I, it's just.
And during the discussion part of that, you will have the ability to do that. State that.
So, Mickey, your, your suggestion was just approve the budget as it is, and no raises? Is that what you said, or that's what we want?
I, I do not recommend taking Mickey's recommendation. You can do that.
Oh, I do, I do.
Of course you do.
Instead of us having, by not having a budget, we have to go month-to-month into the new year. October is going to be a month, we're having to look at October last year and see where we can spend this year.
Okay.
We'll have to look at November last year and see what we could spend this year.
Yeah.
We can do, we can redo the budget, as Angie said, and take the raises out.
Okay.
Or you can approve it as is with a stipulation that no raises happen until you look at it again mid-year. That, to me, is easier than not approving a budget at all. That is, I was just trying to get us a budget.
The argument stands, too, though, if we're going to do that, then we'll just budget raises at mid-year, right? Because the budget isn't right if we follow that logic.
It's not right, but it is. You can go back and redo the numbers and take the raises out, but this was just a simpler way to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The reality is, your budget, you then have a budget that we're not following. So, you do with that what you want, council. But as your city manager, my recommendation is, if you don't want to give raises, we should take raises out of the budget, so it's very clear to the public how we're moving forward.
I think that is prudent. So, Jay, you and Rita are for the budget as it is, but taking the raises out?
For all employees.
For all employees.
And looking at it at mid-budget?
I'm good. That's what they want.
That's your stipulation. So, can both of you state that you would approve that? Can both of you state that? Jay, I'll start with you first.
Uh, with, with what you just stated, yes, I need to see it in writing, but yes. As far as it's been stated, yes.
Obviously, in writing, Jay, we're just talking about, this is a discussion, right?
I understand. But, so I'm not going to give you a guarantee, nothing's a guarantee in life. I might not be here, but, yes, right now, I would stand yes.
So, you mean in six months, you're not going to guarantee we're going to take care of it?
Well, the bigger question is not six months from today, it's three weeks from today, when we're at a council meeting. If I present a budget?
That's what we're talking about.
With the salaries removed, is there consensus that we're going to be able to move forward?
Yes or no?
Yes.
Rita says yes, is that a yes, Rita? Can you speak into the?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Jay, yes or no?
Yes.
Speak into the mic, please. Yes, thank you. All right, moving on.
Brian, do you have consensus from the rest of council to move forward with that?
I think we do, but I'll go through it. Mr. Edwards, do you, are you good with this, the way it is?
To get a budget, but I'm not, I'm not okay with them not getting a raise, with any of these people not getting a raise. If that's what it takes to get it to move forward.
Yes or no?
Yes, Edwards, yes.
Burson, yes.
We're not passing a motion.
No, we're not passing.
No, 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 this is just a general consensus, so that we can get to the September meeting.
And you will have your chance, trust me. Every councilperson will have an opportunity during discussion to state their, their position.
I'll, I'll move forward and vote yes, because clearly, that's the only way we're going to get a budget passed. But I, I do not agree with this. And, and I will state again, I, this, this is a game. This, this is an.
Agree.
An absolute game that they play every time we have these budget conversations. They pretend to agree every meeting, every meet, we agree, we agree, yes, we have a consensus, yes, we have a consensus, yes, we have a consensus, and then we sit down and we go through this again, so. But yes, if that's how we have to pass it, then, then it is what it is.
You're just, you're still yes.
I'm good.
April?
I, I agree with Jacobs on, only because we don't have a choice. Because I don't want to go by last year's budget, but I believe that the employees of the city of Gumbro City deserve a raise.
Okay.
So, we will put together a budget as the final budget that was in your packet. There has been many drafts of this, please make sure that's the one you're looking at. We will put together the budget, less city employee raises, and I will send it to council in the next week for approval at our September meeting.
Okay. 4B, a discussion regarding policies and procedures for the community center. I'll turn this over to our city manager, Dr. Smith.
Yeah, so, community center is on target to be completed by the original due date, which was mid to late October. They thought they may be able to get done earlier, so we had even thought maybe as early as early September. But they ended up waiting several months for some structural drawings to be changed, just with, with the metal building company. But they have a due date regardless, and they're on track to meet that. What council was presented in your packet were some operating policies and procedures. These are a working draft. Brooke is now attending the community center meetings. I went down and took a tour. If anybody is interested in having a tour, I'm happy to arrange that with BJ, just let me know. But what you have, and what was in your packet, is a couple of different things. Some rules and procedures, some, and then some, actually, the, the procedures. So, council approves the policies. What I need to hear from council, what will help Brooke and I, is what is it that you want to use it for? Do you want to rent it out? Do you want to sell memberships? Do you want to, what hours are you looking at opening and closing? And I, I had this conversation with a council member at our 101 meeting. I'm, I'm pretty optimistic that it will be used, and that we will have people in the gym, and that we'll have rentals almost immediately, because we've already got groups asking us, when can we start meeting there? And I have, you know, I, I tend to be optimistic. My background is Parks and Rec, you all know that. I ran a community center for 12 years. And so, the second document is really the how we make it work. The first document is the level of policy that council sets. What do you want the hours to be? And rates, kind of, what do you want to do for rental rates? Brooke and I kind of came up with some. Those were included in your budget as revenue. My recommendation is open the community center Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 2:00, and then 4:00 to 7:00. So, you kind of hit that early morning group. We could potentially do some programs for seniors and such. And then reopen it after school from 4:00 to 7:00 for peo, for kids to come play basketball, or kids and parents to do stuff, or have classes. That would be my recommendation. And then, this is in that very first document, open on Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00. I would also recommend that you charge to reserve that room. Again, that's kind of broken out in your very first document. The payment types, you want a deposit, do four-hour rentals. And, and if we do programs, so I want to be clear, if we do programs, so if we do a senior quilting club, for example, that's something the city would host, and the city would not charge a room rental to that group to do. So, if we are a sponsor of that event. But if, if, I don't know, any facility that you want to rent for a private function, if I want to have a baby shower, then you would reserve that for that. So, our recommendation was, you want to, you want a security deposit. This is in the piece of paper that looks like this on the front. The rules and procedures. It should have been the very top. You should have had two documents in your packet. One looks like this, it's real thick, and one looks like this. So, really, we'll map out what are the. Oh, that's the budget.
I know, but that's where I'm starting.
Is it the second document? If not, I can have Brooke run, make everybody some copies. There should have been two. Do you have the one that looks like this? Yes?
I don't think I do.
Brooke, can you go make me some copies? You can take this if you want, make some copies. This is really, this, this section really has the highlights on it. Janet might be able to pull it up. But it, it kind of outlines the highlights. And then, this is more the procedures that go along with it. But what I really need from city council is, do you want to reserve it or not? What kind of hours are you looking at? I based it on, you know, if I was going to reserve something, how much would it cost? And what would it take? And how much would it cost me? See, our legacy is a big events center here. Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Yep, that one. So, you scroll down a little bit, Janet, thank you. So, we can do reservations, we can do reservations from 8:00 AM to midnight. You know, we work with the charter, with the chamber, so we might not charge the chamber to have luncheons there. We want people in the building, we want people to see it. But if you're having a private baby shower, wedding shower, or birthday party, that's when you're reserving the facility, right? So, you definitely want a deposit. The security deposit is fully refundable, but it just helps protect your building, because what happens in these buildings is, they get worn out very, very quick, because people don't take care of them. They don't treat it like it's their own. There's tape all over the walls. That's what this outlines, right? The second document really outlines what you can and can't do with it. So, you've got reservations. My recommendation, scroll back up just a little bit, Janet, wait till I ask. The reservations, my recommendation would be to have the community center available for registration, for reservations, Monday through Saturday from 8:00 to midnight. That's why we mentioned we may need some part-time staff to help. There's only so many hours in each day, thank you, ma'am. There's only so many hours in each day we can staff it, so we're going to have to hire probably right off the bat, some part-time staff, until we see what we really need. Have folks out at midnight, that way, you know, if they, if they want to have alcohol, they can have alcohol, but they got to have a policeman there, right? They got to have an off-duty police officer there. So, that's the security deposit. And then, rent for four hours for $2.50. We just put that in there, that's about $50 an hour, that's a very reasonable rate. So, an example there is if they, if our hours are 11:00 to 6:00, if they want to rent it, 11:00 to 6:00, the first four hours are $2.50, then each additional hour at $50. Then you, you do that, the $300 deposit is refundable. Typically takes seven to 14 days. Our software will allow us to do that. Open gym usage is another thing that I need some feedback on. You know, this, we did memberships. You could do memberships for $5 or $10. What a membership does is help me track who's in and out of the building, right? Because they have to scan in when they come in, and then if they leave, they leave, but at least I know who's in the building at any given time, in case mama, because inevitably, mama's going to call looking for them. Or somebody's going to need something, or PD's going to show up and want to know. So, it allows us to do that. My recommendation would be to have open gym times, and have the building open to the public outside of reservations from maybe 7:00 to 2:00 Monday through Friday, and 4:00 to 7:00, and then open on Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00, just to have the gym open for people to come and use it, or whatever. And then, programming and events is on top of that. And programming and events will be held based on costs, based on instructors. So, we currently have an instructor that teaches Zumba at the pavilions. We have an instructor that teaches yoga at the, and if we can get those folks to come in and bring additional people in, you kind of base that fee on what the instructor charges. So, the instructor typically will schedule the class, and they get a percentage. Maybe they get 70% of the fee, and the city gets 30% of the fee. That's a pretty average going rate, somewhere between 70, 30, and 80, 20, is kind of what those instructor agreements look like. So, if we can bring somebody in at 10:00 on a Wednesday morning to teach Zumba, and it's kind of, hey, got to have this $10 membership to participate, or you pay for the class. So, that's kind of the direction we're going. I just need some direction from council on, what did you envision this using it for? I know it's been a long time coming. It does have an office, it does have our EOC, it does have gym space, so we got to use it. But, or, or is it just that it's free to everybody? And then, the other, is it residents or non-residents? I might argue that you start with your residents, and see how that goes. And, you know, maybe a, a non-resident can come as a guest of a resident, but, you know, you guys use your ARPA money for this, so where, what are your thoughts? Because I need some direction on how to proceed. We're very close, and so, we want to have policies and procedures in place before we open the doors.
Council directions for staff?
One thing about, as far as the rentals go, I'm kind of thinking we should have like a, like an option for just the room, and then, like, additional if they want to utilize the, the kitchen as well?
You can do that for sure. So, you have two options. In my past experience, you rented the room, if you wanted the kitchen, it was like 25 bucks to just get the kitchen. But you couldn't use the kitchen without using the room, right? So, but you also, I mean, you got to think, we're going to have all, we're going to have some other nominal fees, and those will come to you in September, like tables. If you have tables, rent tables, rent them for a dollar apiece, right? But there's set-up time and tear-down time that staff has to do, and that helps offset some of that. So, maybe we have a microphone, and the microphone is $25, and the kitchen is $25 or $50. Or we can include that, if you rent the room, the kitchen's just included. Up to you guys how we proceed with that.
I'm more one to, I mean, I always hate when I go to restaurants and I get nickel and dime for everything I ask for. You know what I'm saying? So, I think maybe a little bit more of an increase, maybe, and then give them, give them, not necessarily tables and chairs, but I don't, microphones or some other things that maybe can be included, I'm not sure. But then we have the also, the outside, where it has the grills and stuff, right? And I mean, so that, I don't know if that's included in just a room fee, or we talk, is that something different? I don't know where that comes into play.
I don't really know, to be honest either. I would recommend that that's just something you get, when you rent a room, is you get that outside, too. I agree with you, I hate the nickel and dime, and we could start the first year with, hey, it's $250 for four hours, and that includes the kitchen, the outdoor area, and tables and chairs, and microphone, right?
Well, I think.
Well, you could start at 300.
I think a good way to sell it, too, is, for the 300, this is what you get. You know, and, and you list a bunch of items, so they, they see the value of it. A, a menu is always really, really good. And some of the things, and, and some of the places that I've been associated with, it's kind of been a menu. And then, people, and they're good with that. People are good with a menu.
Yeah, we'll have a rental form they fill out, that includes, hey, I need this, and I need this, and this is what my setup is, and that's the operational side of it all.
But if you have a little kiosk in the front, and in the entry and stuff, and they can see all that, and then everybody kind of knows what they're, what they're getting.
And the, and the grills outside, are those charcoal or gas?
I do not know right off the top of my head, but they will be gas if I have anything to do with it.
Well, I was just thinking, who's going to clean the charcoal out? Who gets to dump that out? And, you know, so I mean, those things all, you know, come into play, if it's gas, you still have to clean the grill.
You still have to be clean.
Who cleans the grill? I mean, do we clean the grill?
And typically, your rentor is responsible. And so, in this document, it outlines what you have to do. So, typically, the person that rents the facility is responsible for leaving the room in the same condition they found it, right? We don't ask them to move tables and chairs, but we do ask them to take their trash to the dumpster, and clean the kitchen, and all of that. Now, that will be an added responsibility for. Now, that will be an added responsibility for our building maintenance person they will make, along with the staff at the building, to start making those, a part of what we clean every day, so...
Because that will also mean, I mean, if we go with like gas grills, somebody's got to pay attention to how full the propane tanks are.
Sure, that's all part of why you have that rec coordinator position or that full-time staff position. That was the entire... Now, today, we don't know what it looks like, so I don't want to say, hey, we're going to hire this person until I know what that looks like. So that's kind of why Brooke has agreed to figure this out with me until such time we know what we need.
And when we're speaking of that too, just remember that if you have a rack of basketballs out there, or a rack of volleyballs, you, you have to have staff out there. Kids will walk off with stuff.
And they'll check them out. We'll do a checkout system.
There's a lot of stuff like that, so, but all of that, checking out, all that stuff, you have to have staff to do that.
And again, it's been a while, and I think a lot of it will help when we get to actually go walk in it. I think that would be a good thing for us to do, because I'm thinking to myself, so am I renting a room over here that it connects to the kitchen? Or am I renting a room over here and I get the kitchen? And what if there's more than one rental at a time? Do y'all get the kitchen? I mean, it's like, I can't, I, it's, you know, I know we have...
Because it is two, it is two rooms. Two independent rooms, and the kitchen is in a separate room. So it would only be one person could use the kitchen. If, if you had two rentals, I think you're going to find most people rent both rooms, because they're not large. I think if I have a birthday party, I'm going to rent both rooms probably, because of the size of the rooms. So it is a construction zone right now. They are drywalling and painting, but I'm happy to take you through if you want to see it. But when you walk in the front door, there's a wall, just kind of perspective, there's a wall that separates the gym. So when you walk in, on your right-hand side, immediately on your right-hand side is a small bathroom, a kitchen. You go across the hallway, rental room number one, rental room number two. In the middle, open, is the gym. Thank you, Mickey. That window has got me. In the middle is the gym, which is open space. And there are storage closets throughout, so I'm not even talking about any of those. When you walk in, on your left-hand side is the office, staff office and a storage room. Your EOC, which is a smaller meeting room that will be set up as an EOC with technology and tables and chairs that can be occupied at any time. We could rent it for a small meeting, but it's about 10 people max, probably. And then your men's and women's restrooms and showers. So that's really kind of the layout of it. You go out a side door, and that's kind of where your outdoor patio is taking shape. It's going to take a while for that to really have shape and to have grass and to have, you know, what all do you need, so...
Well, speaking of that, when do you think would be a good time for us to walk it?
Just, we can do it next week. If all, everybody's there, I got to have a meeting, or you can give me a call when you have time, and I'm happy to drive over with you, take you over. Let me, let me, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Should it be part of our one-on-ones?
Let Brooke get a, when is a good time? Are they painting? Are they texturing? Just leaving.
Fixing to have to go? Why? We all do.
We made this meeting together on Tuesday.
I don't have any input to put into this, because I don't know enough about running a convention.
But you're part of the council.
I understand, but we're not...
You have to be here. We're not, this is a discussion.
I understand. I have no input, because I don't, I've never had a...
Okay, well, this is, you guys get mad when I go back to this letter.
Okay.
But, yeah, because you don't like it, because it goes back to exactly what I'm saying. This is an example of that. Rita, and I'm tired of the hand. I'm tired of you saying I don't care about stuff. I'm done with all of that. It's just, it's, it's irresponsible. It really is.
I have a question on this.
Then go ahead, Rita. If you have an actual question, go ahead.
You have people on council that don't actually want to participate on council.
Okay. Page 78.
That's unreal. Unreal. Page 78.
Hey, 78, number 14. Sort of confusing.
I just want to say that, you know, he...
Show me, show me where we're at.
78, page 78, I'm sorry.
Page 78.
14, you said?
Yeah, right here.
At the end time reservation committee?
Make sure we put that out there.
That's how little he thinks about city staff and our police department and everybody else involved in, in this city. That's what he thinks.
Well, it says, please see to notify GBC staff of any kind of music that will be used during the event. And then the next statement, I don't know if I'm mixing it up, says use of any kind of music will not be permitted during the event. So I don't know what that means.
It says unless otherwise noted on the contract.
It says that you need to let us know that you're going to use music, and if you don't, you're not going to be able to play music, because if I have two rentals in two rooms and one is a 16-year-old birthday party and they're playing rap, and the other one is the, the church fundraiser, probably not good use next door to each other. So that's what it says. We are, I have called you rent it. I was able to rent a dance floor in the past, so we've looked into, is that a possibility? So that's why dance floor is still in there. If that doesn't work out, we'll have to take that out. But basically, that just says if, if you're going to have music, you need to let us know. If you don't let us know, you can't have music, so...
And again, I think appropriate music. I have, I have things where we do things at my POA, and sometimes the music needs to be age-appropriate, you know? So there's certain things like that.
I got a question on the rental. If, if you've got, so are we going to do it hourly, or is it just for the block of the room?
It says on there...
So you've got a one-year-old, and you're only going to be there for an hour? Is it still going to be the 300?
Four-hour minimum.
Or is it going to be 300 for four-hour block, or...
You don't have a lot of people that rent it for an hour, right? Let's, just that example, using that example, I'm going to have a one-year-old birthday party. They have to get in and set up. They have to have the party. Then they have to have time to clean up. That time adds up real quick. Now, we don't have to do four-hour blocks. I'm happy to do 50 or $75 an hour, per hour, and leave it at that. Four-hour blocks work for some people, they don't work for some people. But either way, we put in an option in here, but I'm happy to do 50 or 75, 25. Y'all tell me, like, that's up to council to...
I just knew some parties are quicker than others.
Give me some...
Sometimes you don't have enough room at your house, but you want it quick, so the kid has something for some pictures?
I've seen it done both ways. Very seldom does anybody rent the building for an hour, because they can't get up. It takes them 30 minutes to set up. Takes them 30 minutes to tear down. That leaves them with zero time to actually have the party. So typically, when they rent something like this, they're, they're having a shindig that's going to probably last a couple of hours, gives them an hour on the front to set up, decorate, an hour on the back to tear down and clean up, and a two-hour party.
My youngest is 26. I don't remember those days.
Been a while, right? Yeah, yeah, me too, Bobby.
Yeah, I think that four-hour minimum is a good...
And it allows them to add time, you know? And we may come up against, somebody says, I want four hours, and then there's not another four-hour period available, then we will have some, some caveats in there where we could do that, right? So, so let's say I rented, April rented 8:00 to 12:00. Well, the building's only open till 2:00 with those folks, that if there's not a four-hour period...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Is there any questions from council about the rates or the hours? Those are the biggest things that we have to firm up, because I really, at the next meeting, have to have a policy approved by council, and then Brooke will, from there, put together the procedures under which we operate those. So hours, any questions about the hours? Those are flexible. We can always go back and amend them once it gets open to kind of see. That's why I can't have one full-time person work all those hours, because there's no way for somebody to be there from 8:00 to 7:00 to 2:00. What did I put on here?
4:00 to 7:00.
7:00 to 2:00, and then 4:00 to 7:00, and then 9:00 to 3:00. That's way more than 40 hours, and Brooke already has a full-time job, so we may have to bring in a couple of part-time people to help with that. That was part of that budget for the community center. Any, any questions about the hours? If we could start there, that would help me.
Like on a weekend, would the hours go later, say if somebody wanted to have a...
Yeah, so this is just open to the public, right?
A wedding reception or something there?
Yeah, this is just open to the public.
Asking question here.
Yeah, open to the public.
If they wanted to bring alcohol, could, if it was a wedding party, could they bring alcohol?
They could. And that is outlined in the actual procedures of how staff implements it. They absolutely could. They're just required to have an officer, an off-duty officer. And we will require that it is a gun barrel city off-duty officer. We'll partner with the association to make that happen. That's what we've done in my past. It works. That way, my Uncle John, well, he's an officer in Dallas. He should be able to be. Nope, because Uncle John is there having fun. I need one of my guys there, making sure that that's not going to be a problem, so...
So what about, so I know in a lot of wedding venues, which I know this is not necessarily a wedding venue, and I can see it both ways, so I'm just going to ask, but, you know, but about, you know, usually it has somebody who's serving has to be with a TBAC certified
TABC.
Something like that, so they don't over-serve? So I don't know if you're putting that responsibility on the police officer?
No, no, they're not serving it, they're just there.
Right.
I will tell you that, yes, if we had somebody that served, they had to be TABC certified. But we did not stop them from just bringing in a cooler. So I don't know how council feels about that, right? I could have rented it for my 21st birthday, brought in a couple coolers, and when the beer's gone, the beer's gone. I wanted them drinking in my building, not in their car, because that's what ends up happening. They go to their car and drink, and then they come back in. And then they go to their car and drink, and they come back in. So we allowed people to bring in a cooler, a beer, and self-serve. Or we allowed people to, if they had a bartender, they had to be, and, and TABC requires that. So we need to do a little bit of research, how that works out for TABC standards, but we, we allowed them to do both. So that's up to council how we proceed with that. Do you have a feeling one way or the other?
And as far as police presence there goes, our cameras are going straight to police dispatch. They're going to monitor the community center from...
I can't answer that question right now, Jennifer, because I don't know. It's on my list of stuff to ask. I have a long list of stuff to ask.
I don't know if they'd be monitoring it, but it'd probably be just like it would at security at your house or something. It would be recorded somewhere that they could look it up if they need to, but I don't know that it's going to be on the police scanner.
I assume it is a vigilante camera, but I, I don't want to give you a wrong answer, because I do not know. That is a question I need to ask, is how did they plan cameras into this? As you know, this was 90% planned when I came on board. I've kind of watched it shake out, but I do need to follow up on where's the camera system going to be? How's it going to be monitored? Is it, I suspect it is mainly outside, but I don't know that for sure. So I have some questions to ask about that. Actually, Brooke has some questions to ask about that. Brooke's taking notes over there. All the stuff she has to ask tomorrow.
I mean, as far as the security deposit, I don't know. I, part of me feels like that's a little high. I mean, especially for some of our community members, you know, that have little kids and they do want to come and throw a nice little birthday party. And I know that some, a, a security deposit like that is really going to preclude a lot of people, so I would like to make it accessible.
$100, $150? Y'all tell me? I, I just threw some numbers here.
Of course, I have events, so my thought is that, and of course, I can't remember, what are the floors going to be in there?
I don't remember what the floors are going to be either. I know the gym has a rubber, I believe the gym has a rubberized floor, but I don't remember what the floor material is. We can, we can confirm.
Well, my point is sometimes you have to have carpets cleaned.
I'm going to assume it is not carpet.
Damages that they do at birthday parties, stuff they leave on the wall. I mean, who's going to, and what if they have to, what if they didn't clean the grill? What if, you know, so someone has to do all those things.
I understand.
So I don't know, I'm not saying the city would do this, but a lot of times, we would, you know, give the check, you know what I'm saying? And then, of course, we could always, if they didn't use it, we'd give it back, or, you know, whatever. But I don't know, I just think a security deposit is important. And then I think, I don't know if this is in here, because I apologize, I think you might have gave us that a one-on-one.
I did give you a copy. It's okay.
I've been so focused on the budget that I really haven't even read this, so I apologize.
At your one-on-one, we just kind of hit on...
There's just been so much on the budget. But, but anyways, because then my question would be, and I don't know if I've read this, is like, what if they, they do that, they book it, and then two days before, three days before, they say, ah, I don't want to do it. I'm on habit there. You know what I'm saying? Well, we've turned down six other options since then.
That is part of what the deposit does, yeah.
So yes, that's what I'm saying. So then if that's the case, it at least needs to, you know, be close to what they're paying us, because that's all the money you're probably ever going to get from them.
Well, the reservation policy covers that, I think.
Well, that's what I said. I apologize that I had not read that. I think she gave us on a one-on-one, but there has been so much information, misinformation on the budget that I've spent tracking that all down.
And it is, and, and, you know, how cities handle deposits are different everywhere, right? We kick this off, maybe we take a check and we don't deposit it. We just hang on to it, put it in their file, right? There's goods and bad sides to all of that.
Evidently.
What we have done in the past, in my experience, is we charged a credit card. We required the deposit to be put on a credit card. And then we can quickly turn around and refund that through the system. Brooke's training on that system now. It's kind of full service. It's going to let us do ball field, it's going to let us do pavilion, everything. So, you know, we take a credit card, it charges it, but, you know, if, that's, that's where council has to give me some direction on what's the right number. We picked a number of 250 or 300. I think one place it says, as a matter of fact, I think one place it says 300 and one place it says 250. I'll be honest with you, because I went back and forth, so... But 200, 250, we, we just, I kind of base that on experience of when somebody kicks a hole in the wall, it doesn't really cover it, and we don't, we may never see them again. So we try to balance that on just the wear and tear, the tape. I've seen a lot of community centers in the metroplex, and I'll, unfortunately for Mesquite, I'll drop them in. They were one that, when they opened a lot of their rec centers years and years and years ago, they didn't really, it was cheap, like it was 50 bucks and no deposit. And those community centers haven't held up over the long haul, because they didn't, And those community centers haven't held up over the long haul, because they didn't, they didn't, then have the resources to take care of them, right? And that, that becomes an issue of, you know, when somebody scrapes the wall, well, now you gotta repaint it, right? We've gotta be right after a rental, making sure that we keep that building looking in pristine condition, so that we can keep, keep it a revenue-driving machine.
Well, I think too, this is gonna be a fluid situation. This is a new undertaking for us, and I think nothing is written in stone. I think this is a, a good jumping off point, and again, one of the advantages of having Dr. Smith is that her background is in Parks and Rec, so I think we have a good, but understand that none of this is in, in stone, or, you know, in, uh, unerasable ink. We can always adjust as we go, and if we think that 250 looks better to individuals, and maybe you make it 250 for residents and 300 for people that are outside, I mean, whatever. But I, I think it, we have to understand this will always, because we're not gonna know, um, it may take 30 minutes to set something up. We may be able to do it in 15 to 20. It may take us 45. We won't know till we really get in there, and having new staff, um, dealing with these, you know, we, we'll get better with time. I mean, it's, 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 uh, um, you know, it's on the job, and it, it's, it's gonna be, um, but again, I think the, the advantages of having that, um, I, I can tell you, the Rotary has reached out to me, different people, um, hey, can we, can, I know we do our, our meetings here, could, do you think there'd be a possibility of doing it there? We have a lot of people that have reached out, and I know that I personally, so, um, I, I think, you know, if we're, um, a little high, we'll, we'll know that right away, and I, I don't think that anything's in stone that we'll be able to. And I think that's the beauty of what we've been, is we're very, you know, we're conscious of what the community's asking for and what they want. And those of us sitting right here, um, minus one, have a, a, a real understanding of what everybody really wants and what it, what it needs, and, and so I think we're at a really good starting point.
And deposits per room?
It, it is, yes. Um, it is typically per room, um, and then there are some blanks on here on this original page, because we need to fill in some, you know, capacity and that kinda stuff. If I get it back and the capacity's 50, and I think it's 100, well, maybe it is less, right? But, um, I just kinda wanna know council's taste, um, for deposit fees and hours, so that we can start to craft an official policy council can approve, and then build those procedures around that.
Well, in the summer, it might change, the hours might change.
It could, potentially.
Yeah.
I think that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, they absolutely could. We can kinda base it on usage too, right? You aren't gonna have a lot of middle school kids up there hanging out by themselves, so I kinda built those hours around time for a parent to get home and spend time with their kid at the gym, right? What we don't want to become, and I have done this, and it's a mistake, is a babysitting service. Um, we don't wanna be a babysitting service, because we don't have the capacity or the staff to do that. Or the space, honestly, to do that, but, you know, if we have a men's group that wants to come and play basketball three days a week, and they wanna play at 6:30, we may alter that a little bit to accommodate them, but, um, that's, you know.
Well, and you have to have waivers and things of that nature in there, and.
Well, governments have a bit of immunity based on just you taking advantage of a service we provide, so, yeah, like any gym. So really what I need from y'all is some feedback on deposit, on membership rates, on fees for rentals, and hours. Those are the things I really need some.
Residents versus public.
And residents, they're making me a list, yes.
So the, the rentals would be open to anybody, right? I mean.
So the way they're currently written, it's available to residents and local businesses. It doesn't address non-residents. I have a policy for non-residents. I can plug our non-residents in, but the way the draft you have is, is resident rentals and local Gunbarrel City business rentals. So.
I don't know, I think they're open to anyone that's got the money to rent it, take care of it.
I'd be okay with what the mayor suggested, having it, you know, a, a little more reduced rate for our, our citizens and businesses, and then if people outside of our community wanna come and utilize it a little more.
We can do that.
I think, for me, it's gonna depend on how busy it is. I think I don't ever wanna turn away a Gunbarrel resident or a business owner to facilitate out other people. I do, you know, so that's one thing. I just don't know how busy we are. For not busy, then that's great. I open it up to everyone. And then as far as the membership goes, I think that, you know, the day-to-day memberships, you know, you know, at first I wanna say residents, you know what I'm saying? This is for Gunbarrel residents. It's for our people. And so, um, it's, it's, it's a, an incentive or a, a, a lux, what are you gonna call it? Avenue, whatever that the city owns, that we can. Amenity, thank you. That we can, that we provide to our citizens. Um, so the only thing with that, that goes along with that, is like, when you start talking about, um, um, aerobics, you know, that those people might be coming from Maybank, so does that mean they can't come in? I mean, so, you know, I go back and forth with that. You know, does that mean that the people who, like you said, who are over at the, at the park doing it, what if some are from Gunbarrel, some are from Maybank, do we say then they can't come in?
I want them to be able to come in and, and utilize the facility too, and maybe just for this first year, until we see how the rentals go, we can just say residents and businesses from Gunbarrel only, just for now, and then, or six months or a year from now, we can revisit that.
Again, like I said, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to think out loud, you know, to have a conversation.
But as far as like the classes, like if we do end up, you know, with Zumba and yoga and all of that, like I, I want people from all around Cedar Creek Lake to feel like they can come in.
Maybe those aren't memberships.
And that's not a membership, so, so let me walk through that just a little bit. So you have, you really have three different things, right? You have rentals that you would pay for, you have memberships that you would pay for, and you have programs and events. So, um, now that doesn't say if I, as a resident, rent it, I can't invite someone that doesn't live here, right? They would absolutely be welcome. It's just only reservable by a resident.
Gotcha.
Um, memberships, if you limit that to residents, they could potentially bring a guest for a fee that isn't a resident, but you only sell memberships to residents. And then programs and events, programs tend to be treated a little differently in that I have Zumba, and Zumba's gonna happen on Wednesdays at 7 o'clock, and anybody can register. We'll have a system that allows you to go in, and maybe it's $30 for four weeks of Zumba, and you go in and register, and you can open that only to residents, or you can open that to anybody. Most people open programs to anybody, right? Because the instructor's there with them, the instructor's making sure they're doing what they need to do.
Want that to be.
There is a person in class with them the entire time, so you've got a couple of options.
Yeah, and you also have to remember, um, because they're basically like a subcontractor, is when you have a, a, um, a teacher or a coach or whatever it is, um, they, they want a flat fee. They're gonna want their fee.
So, so what we have done in the past, so with Texas labor laws, we have to make them a part-time employee. We have to pay them minimum wage. We don't have a choice, right? And, and it's just part of it, but they get paid minimum wage, and then they get a percentage of the revenue they bring in. So if they bring in $100, let's say they do a five, a five, four-week class, and they, for everybody that registers, they make $100. Traditionally, they get paid minimum wage, and then they get a percentage of the revenue, up to 70%. So if it was, because math is not my top priority, or my top thing, if it's $100, if we made $100, April, as the instructor, would get 70, the city would get $30 of that, so that's kinda that split. We do pay them minimum wage for the hours that they teach. We have to, we don't have a choice. That's required by state law. Every city around the metroplex got an audit, and we had to do the same with referees if they work for us. But then we offset, we, we settle when the class is over. We paid you $32 in hourly wage, and here's your other $40 to make that even, or $36 to make that even, and the city keeps 30.
Now, does that instructor ca- carry their own liability insurance coverage? That covers.
Unless they are a 1099, unless they are a company. Most of your instructors are not. They are individuals who just have a passion for something and wanna teach something. They wanna teach art, they wanna teach ballet. If they carry their own insurance and they are a company, that we can 1099, we will do that, so that's the other option.
Good.
And the answer would be no, there would be no liability coverage from the instructor, because they are our employee.
Yeah, they're covered by the city.
Yes.
So you are also saying that the fee that they, the 70, 30, um, that's the maximum, it's not additional $70 plus the hourly wage?
No, 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 it's the max. So we just settle at the end. Um, we did this. I had 25 instructors in my past. We settled at the end, so if I paid them whatever minimum wage is, $8 an hour, for the four hours they taught for me, and that was $35, and they made 100, I just paid them the difference in that. So we track exactly, and all that's through an instructor agreement upfront.
Do we have that? We're working on.
We will have that, yeah. That's a relatively easy process. That's a one-pager that says, I'm gonna teach this class on this day, and this is my pay split. And we negotiated based on the amount of work it took us. Some people take their own reservations. If they took their own registrations, right, if they had Jazzercise, is a really good example. Jazzercise was an 80/20 split, because Jazzercise took all their own registrations, they took all their own money, they owed me 20% at the end. And they did that. It was never a problem, so the split kinda depended on what we were providing for that person. We're providing a ton of tables and chairs and labor and setup. It looks a little different than someone who brings all their own equipment in, for example.
And let's say that that's the case, and the people who are coming to that class, um, I assume they don't have a membership?
Typically, if you allow them to come to a program, they do not always have a membership. Membership is more for gym use, is really what it's centered around.
So my, my question was getting to, so you really don't know if they're, who's coming and going?
Not necessarily, no. Other than I have a roster from the instructor, so if they register with us, Brooke, whoever, would enter their name into that class, we would take their payment. If the payment's $50, we would take the $50. We can charge it on a card, cash, check, whatever, and then I have a roster that says, these people signed up. What Jazzercise did is Jazzercise provided me a roster. These are the people that participate in our month, our class every single month, and I had a roster of people that would be there every, pretty much. Jazzercise is kinda come or go. We don't have the space to have Jazzercise. That's not gonna be a problem here. Um, we just don't have the room. But, um, if you had a third party that did yoga, and she could offer yoga every Wednesday morning at 9:00 a.m., and it was a come-and-go class, you paid $2 every time you showed up, we would work that out with the instructor.
I've also seen it, just throw it out there, because I don't wanna complicate things, but I know, um, what we have done, we have people that use our facility, but only with their instructor. So we don't make them pay a full membership. We have what's called a usage fee. And so you can also, you know, have it like that, because those people are only coming for that instructor. But at the same time, it's still wear and tear on, on the facility, and you still, so that's what I've seen in the past, and we've adopted that. It's worked out great. It's actually been much more effective for a lot of people, because that's, that's why people sometimes don't even wanna come in the instructors, like, I'm paying a full membership, I'm only here when Bob's here.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm only here four times a, a month, you know.
Yeah, we've treated those like programs.
Sure.
We treated our trainers a little different. We don't have gym space, we don't have workout equipment, but that's how we treated programs. So even if it's a one-on-one, we would set up a deal where, you know, you could use this equipment for this, and I promise you, somebody's gonna wanna be doing basketball skills training, and somebody's gonna wanna be doing.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, um, all that'll pop up, because we're gonna have indoor gym space that's not attached to a school and school hours.
Right, which, which earlier you were mentioning, like if there was a men's club who wanted to come, or a league that wanted to come in on, you know, 6:30 every night or whatever, we just wanna make sure that we still have usage for the community, or time for the community.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, we can also do half gyms, you know, you can play on a half court, and the other court, half court's open, so we'll be very cognizant of that to make sure that.
But if you did that, then that necessarily also would not be, uh, residence only, right? That would, because if it's a league or a group of men.
If it's a league, no, but if it's just open gym, like the men wanna just come in and play open gym, they absolutely could do that. They would have to have a membership.
Yep.
And that's how we treat it. I had a group that played Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday at 6:30. We had a group that played Tuesday, Thursday at 8:00, and they all had memberships, and they came in, and they based kind of how much of the court they used on who else was in the space, and so, good users, but.
So I guess we can now talk about the fees, right?
Yep. Let's start, can we start with deposit? Give me some direction on deposit of renting space. So I think your policy says $300, um, and that would be per room, because you would have two separate rooms. Do you have a feeling about that one way or the other? Because we will have to set some fees before we open, so.
Mr. Edwards, start with you.
I agree with that, and then, like you said, we can, it's a, a work in progress.
Okay.
We can always adjust.
Ms. Jacobs?
I'm, I agree with that.
Okay. Ms. Evans?
Well, I think it's a little high, but if the rest of you like it, that's okay. The security.
Ms. Burns?
I'm good with it.
Okay. So $300 per room. You could also, you will also be able to rent the gym. I don't know if I mentioned that. You'll also be able to rent the gym, and we'll just make postings that, hey, the gym is closed from this time to this time. We do birthday parties and stuff in gyms all the time, so take that into consideration and make postings in plenty of time.
And just make sure we're good with the hours, right? Everything, good on the hours and good on deposit.
Everybody good with the hours as they're there for now? We can always come back to council and say, oh, this isn't working. We don't need to open till 9:00. There's nobody there at 7 o'clock. Right now I have 7 to 2 and 4 to 7, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday, 9 to 3.
Okay, how about membership now?
Everybody good with hours?
Yeah.
Uh, membership fee, um, I think in some places it says 5, and some places it says 10. I would recommend you go with 10 for a year. Um, that's very inexpensive.
Sure.
You can go with 100 a year, but I would start at 10, and let's see how we go, and then after that first year, you can always up that, but it gives everybody a little bit of buy-in on their responsibility.
So that's like, is that 10 for the family, or is that 10 per family member?
10 per person, 10 per person for one year, um, and then it's renewable annually, so.
All age groups?
I'm sorry.
All ages. I mean, if the kids too, it's still $10.
If they're there using the center, then it's 10 bucks.
I agree.
I agree.
Residents only?
What now?
Residents only for memberships, just to use the open gym.
For this year, for now. We can revisit that as well.
We're just talking about open gym, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Just having a membership to come in, because you gotta think, right? We're gonna have the gym, they're gonna have showers. Oh, I was like, is he okay? Sorry. Um, all right, so memberships. So then what about fees for renting the space? That is on the second page. Now I have the pages all mixed up, but that's on the second page of the packet Brooke bought you. It's a $300 deposit, four hours, 250, and then each additional hour over that is $50 an hour.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes, correct.
I agree.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay.
Evans, good. Burns?
Yes.
Good.
I was thinking somewhere it said the rental time. What was the, rental can be Monday through Saturday from?
Yeah, typically they extend your hours, you're open to the public. It says on the very first page, Gunbarrel City is available Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight for rentals. So you could hypothetically, and what we would do, like, let's say that I wanna have, um, Ava Jay's birthday party on a Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:00 in the gym, right, or from, let's say Brooke order, rents it from 2:00 to 7:00 on the gym, we would just post the gym is closed during this time for a rental, so.
Right, but then earlier you were mentioning the off, the hours being, you know, 7:00 to 2:00 and 4:00 to 7:00, but that means right there that they cannot, they can do it at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, so it doesn't really, so it's not, because it's not open. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, you could have.
I was making sure that's what your intent was.
You could have some conflicts where the building is open to the public, 7:00 to 2:00 and 4:00 to 7:00, but the gym isn't available from 4:00 to 7:00. So we would just make sure people knew that that was going on. Um, our practice is typically two weeks ahead of time. We start notifying people. We will do our best to, or council can say, we don't wanna rent the gym during open hours, we only wanna rent the gym after hours. I don't know what that looks like early on, because you don't know, I'd rather rent the gym than not have anybody in it. So, you know, maybe we kinda play that by ear if council has a taste for that.
I'd like, yeah, for them to keep us updated. Of course, hopefully we'll get updates anyway, um, because again, the last thing I wanna do is fill it up with a bunch of rentals, and the kids can never come and play.
And I think we'll have a, um, and, and I know Brooke is great at this, is, is you have a, um, a website or a spot on that, and parents know, hey, before I run Billy up there, let's just check it, see the availability, and if it's updated, I, I think everybody's good with that. That's the best communication we can do.
You'll be able to see too, I believe, um, Brooke, Brooke may fall out of her chair when I say this, because she's the one that's done all the training on the software so far. You should be able to see on a calendar online, is that what you were gonna say? Should be able to see on a calendar online, hey, this is what's going on at this time, because if you had a yoga class, and we have 100 ladies that wanna take yoga, there are 50 ladies, they're gonna end up in the gym. That may close the gym, but we'll try to do that in times when, you're not gonna do that at 5:00, when school's out, and we have our highest gym attendance, right? So, but you should be able to, with the software, see that on the website, and have some, be able to look at that, like, from the app even. I think they have an app that.
Yeah, there's a separate, uh, it, it'll be on our website, but it goes to a separate page just for the community center rentals and all that stuff.
Like ball fields, you'll be able to pull it up, see when that's available. Pavilion, you'll be able to see, everything you'll be able to see just at a click, what's available and what's not.
That's great.
That's exciting.
Anything else from us?
And if I'm wrong, don't blame Brooke, because Brooke's the one doing all the training on the software right now.
Rentals would be for anyone.
Yep. Y'all are good with rentals being, do you want rentals to be residents and non-residents? Do you want rentals to be residents and local businesses? How do you wanna start, is the question?
Residents and local businesses, and then non-residents can do for just a, a slightly larger fee.
Okay.
Because we wanna make open to as many people as wanna come, and that helps us generate some revenue as well.
So do you want non-residents to be $300 for the four-hour block, or 350 for the four-hour block?
Oh, I thought we were talking about the membership fee. I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, we're not, I want the memberships to be residents only.
Residents only?
Yep.
Yeah.
The membership fee, and then we're talking about when you rent it to, like, special events. Do you want it to be residents only, residents and non-residents?
I think you add $50 to that for outside.
Yeah, so a nominal, just a small nominal fee to it. I agree, like a 50, 50 bucks more.
It's 300 for.
Any more is gonna be too much, and it's gonna put it out of reach.
300 for a four-hour block. Yes, 250 if you're a resident, or a local business.
Yes.
300 if you're a non-resident.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Everybody good?
Hours are good?
Hours are good.
Residents first and non-residents. Residents only can be members
Yes.
at $10 per person per year.
Yes.
Non-residents can participate in programs, if there is an outside instructor, or they can rent the room at the slightly higher rate.
Yes.
I like this.
Yes.
Yes.
That's a good starting point.
Have I covered everything?
Yes.
I think so.
Huh?
There was some, but I was just thinking.
Brooke?
Does that give you the information?
Did I get everything you needed?
Oh, I know it was on the, um, open gym membership type thing. Are we gonna o- open that to business owners, resident, uh, Gunbarrel resident?
So it's open to residents. Do you wanna open it to Gunbarrel City business owners as well? And I'll tell you, there's some benefit to that, because you might have, you know, somebody come by and play basketball before they go to work. We have shower facilities and such. So, um, so membership is residents and local business owners. Um, how, how far do you wanna take that, right? So if, if I'm a local business owner, what about employees? How do they, and then how do they prove that? So I'm just, I have to, I have to ask that question.
Well, you can have a corporate rate. Just have a, you have a corporate, it's, it's, it's a company rate or a corporate rate.
Right, but the one he's, okay, so let's say that we use a, a, I mean, whoever it is, and how do you prove you work there?
Well, he has a list of his.
And he has to notify.
Yeah, he has to notify us.
They get membership cards, right?
Yeah, they would get a card.
Yeah, and they would have to present that every time they come in.
Sure.
But when they get fired, they don't get the card taken away.
Yeah, that's the challenge. Yeah, that's the challenge. It is a challenge.
Well, I, I would think that that guy, the first thing he'd wanna do is tell us that, hey, Billy Bob can't come in.
They don't.
I don't think he's worried about the local GM.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, but I, uh, but I'm, I'm good, I mean, but we need to figure out what that corporate rate would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, they could do it as an individual. That would be the business owner only, and his family that he pays for. Or if we're offering it to the employees, he would have to pay a corporate rate, and I think we also need to take into consideration the work that it takes with a corporate rate, which I'm fine with that, but to what number is that number? And is it unlimited to the number of employees and their families?
I just think it's another little benefit, though, to bring in your business here, you know? You have.
I totally agree with that. But then do I allow my, my, so I got my employees, and then do I let the employees spouse and kids? Quit laughing at me, Rita.
No, I mean, it's.
It, it's a valid question, because while.
No, I would say it would just have to be with employees.
While it is a benefit, it also is a little harder to manage, because I now have to have proof that they're there.
Yeah.
And I have to have some kind of agreement from the owner that when that owner dismisses their service, they don't still have a, just some.
Well, then it's just ten bucks to everybody.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the corporate rate needs to be, to include, to be high, you know, a hundred dollars a year, for example. I don't know, I'm just saying that to be, to offset the cost of keeping up with that.
And you could do that. You could do a, um, you could do individual residents only. You could do a hundred dollars a year corporate, um, where that's up to ten employees.
But that's and their families, though.
But that's it. You could do just ten employees. I mean, it's just the gym space, right? I mean, it's not like we have a workout room and aerobics, or, or pickleball. We don't have all that stuff, so we have to take into consideration the services we provide. You could do a corporate rate of, say, a hundred dollars, and let's say Chili's joins, Chili's employees have to have an employee ID to come up and use it, and then they use their employee ID. That's an alternative.
But then you're only allowing the employee to come up there.
Yep.
So, you know, so the question is, what would that Chili's employee want to do when they come up there by themselves?
Yeah.
Zumba, aerobics, yoga.
But they can join that through the, but they could join that without, without having a membership.
They could do that without having a membership, just for open gym.
Yeah.
And maybe we just start with residents only open gym and see what happens.
Okay.
Right? That would be maybe my recommendation, is start with.
And then if you hear of, of a business that, um, has an interest, talks, says they would do it, or like to do it, and get their input on how they think it would work, then we could always come back and revisit it.
What happens when Walmart comes to us? A lot, I'm just telling you, from a gym owner, that's, that's a lot of revenue.
It, it, it could potentially be a lot of revenue, but it also can be the trade-off of extra wear and tear on your facility, and that has to balance itself, right?
And then, and then it being so busy that residents don't use, get to use it.
I mean, it might be different if we had gym equipment, and we had, even if we just had gym equipment, it would be different, right? But we don't. We have a basketball court. And so that doesn't mean Walmart can't rent it, and, and have an event there, and take over the whole building. Um, I'm all for that, right? We can absolutely do that with them, so.
Um, one of the questions that I had was if a group wanted to come in and, um, pay our fees, but then charge an additional fee for.
Great question.
Um, so like, if a group is serving a dinner or a lunch, and they're charging the people coming to the dinner or lunch a fee for that, are we okay with that or not?
I will tell you, most cities have a city ordinance that doesn't allow you to use a city facility and profit from it.
To make money.
So, um, now they do do special arrangements with groups like the Rotary, or groups like the Chamber, or where, you know, that's the nonprofit, that the city is actually sponsoring and partnering with, but wouldn't allow, um, you know, Jane Doe to come in and rent the building for two hundred and fifty, and then serve a plated meal for fifty dollars a plate, right?
Makes sense.
So nonprofit versus profit, maybe, is one way to look at it. Um, we didn't allow for-profit companies to rent our facility and then make a profit off of that.
Right.
Uh, wear and tear, again, was the reason. But we did partner with nonprofits, like the Chamber. Uh, the Kiwanis was a big one in my past that we partnered with, and we held their, we don't have room to hold a very large event. We can't hold three hundred people, right? So we're probably never gonna end up with the Rotary Waiter event, because we can't have enough people. But, um, you know, some of those, you, you allow them to rent the space and charge them. I would love to be able to hold Chamber luncheons, right? And I'm not looking to make a million dollars off a Chamber luncheon. I want those people in my building. Um, so there are some groups like that, that, you know, we already sponsor and partner with, that we would like to carry that over.
So I'm good with nonprofits and not allowing for-profits to do that.
Okay.
Agreed.
Anything else, Brooke? I wanna make sure I got all, most of your questions.
A lot of my questions are like what we would require for registration and proof of residency, but I think that's something that we might just talk.
Got that. I figured that one out.
We're doing business owners only.
We'll have to have, we will have to have a driver's license and utility bill. So we've done this. Um, because we don't charge a property tax, I can't just pull up their Henderson CAD account and see where they live. So, um, we will have to have kind of a map. We'll have a city limit map, and this is old school. This takes it way back, but it works. And we can pull them up on Henderson CAD, pin where that house is, is that in the city limits, or not in the city limits, but we'll have to have a driver's license and a utility bill. Since we don't have utilities, it could be any utility bill at that house, so.
But, but the, but the. Utility bills in my grandma's mother's sister's name.
Is sometimes. So hopefully you have some bill in your name that comes to your house, because that's the requirement, right? A utility bill and a driver's license, because people change utilities, but they, because they don't wanna pay them anymore, but they don't change driver's licenses, so that's what we'll do.
And then what about, uh, citizens that live within ETJ?
That would be, um, not, well, they're not.
They're, they're not residents, so.
Okay.
That's for y'all to decide, but they're not residents, so.
If a member brought a guest, would there be a guest fee?
Typically, you do. That's one of the things, thank you, Brooke, brings back.
I see you mentioned that earlier.
That's one of the things that you typically do do, and it's like five bucks to bring a guest. Now, yes, memberships are cheap. They're ten. You could do a dollar. Um, but typically, you have all the information of that member. You're not gonna have that much information on the guest, so you've gotta kind of weigh that, right? So up to council, um, Brooke and I kinda kick this back and forth. Uh, ten-dollar membership, five dollars to bring a guest is relatively fair. If they're, if they are a resident, it's just cheaper to get a membership, and if they're not, then you're compensating for the fact that they're, they're not a resident and they're still using your facility. Or do you only want to be able to bring guest residents, right? It's hard when, and, and I try to put myself, I, I've been in this situation where I had a seven-year-old, and her seven-year-old best friend was there, and they wanted to go to the jet, they wanted to go to the rec center, right? Well, it's hard to say can't, because that kid doesn't live here. So if you do a, you know, ten-dollar membership for the year for residents, but then you can bring a guest for five bucks, but you have to be with a member.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's fair. And then also, I think, I mean, we should, we should get that. We should have a form at the front that they have to fill out, you know, with all of their.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
All of their information, just so that we, we know.
Our system should allow us to sell just a guest day pass. Um, that is simple enough, and you put in their information, so you have it, so.
So you just said day pass. So, um, what if I come early in the day, and then I, y'all close at two, and then I wanna come back at four? Do they have a way that they can come back at four since the day pass?
Typically, a guest is for the day. If you're gonna charge five dollars for a guest, it gets you in ten o'clock in the morning. You can leave, go have lunch, and come back at four and play some more.
Do they get it?
That's only with the resident only, right? They can't just, they have to be accompanied by the resident.
They have to be accompanied by the resident, and typically you give them a receipt, and they are just required to keep up with that. But, I mean, I think you're gonna have, you're not gonna have four hundred people a day, so it's gonna be relatively easy to say, oh, yeah, you paid this morning. Or, you know, they'll get, the, the system sends a receipt, or prints you, we can print you a receipt relatively easily.
Sometimes it won't be the same person in the afternoon, the same morning.
That's, that's the thing. It will have to be, so.
Okay, I just make sure. I'm just trying to think all the things that.
Yeah, yeah. Something we have to work out. It's a good, but, so a guest fee is five dollars for the day, and that could be resident or non-resident. Um, have to be with resident.
Right, so if a resident didn't have a membership, didn't buy a membership, they'll pay five dollars every time they come until they buy a membership.
Well, that's the other thing. Do you just wanna, I, I would recommend that you have to have a, a membership to play, right? You can't just come up and buy a day pass. A guest fee pass is a little different than a day pass.
Okay.
So, um, at the rate of five dollars versus ten dollars, I would recommend you just buy it. Have them required, if they're a resident, they have to have a membership. If they want to bring a guest, resident or non, then it's five dollars each time that person comes with the resident.
And the parent has to be, to register the membership.
Yes. It has to be done by an adult. And there's some rules built into this about how you determine how many people can live at a house, and how many, how can I have how many kids? It's not a big deal here, 'cause it's ten-dollar flat fee for each person. But what happens is you end up with, and I've seen this happen, right? I, I have three kids, and you have three kids, and then all six kids aren't really residents here. We just have them during the summer, but we go ahead, so you, so you have, I mean, I've asked for tax rolls. I've asked for tax. How many people do you pay taxes on? Who's your dependents? The dependents of the homeowners are the ones that get to, to get to join, so we have some caveats in there. We can skirt around, so.
Well, it is hard for the, um, I caught parents that have, with their kids, you know, half of their mom, half of the dad. I think that can be, I'm fine with them being members. Um, but then sometimes, you know, you just have, um, it's hard to prove, 'cause, you know, Billy's always at my house, and it's my kid's son's friend, but, you know, I'm gonna say he's my son, just, you know, whatever, but.
Yeah. There'll be some, some kinks we have to work out as we go through this, so we'll figure it out.
Well, I can just tell you, in the gym ministry, or any type of a facility like this, they will always find a crack.
Mm-hmm.
They just do.
Well, it's hard to prove that who's the parent. I mean, you know, there's a child. This might be the kid that, you know, it's my husband's.
But I think if, if we're always.
Again, it's not that much a fee that why someone needs to lie. It's not like it's fifty dollars a month.
And, and we always say, the reason that we're doing all of this is for safety. There's just a lot of bad people out there that exploit kids and things of that nature. We just need to know who's in, who's not.
That was my point with the programs. How am I supposed to know who's gonna?
Absolutely, and we always stick to that.
Right.
I'm good. If y'all have any questions, I'm happy to attempt to answer them. Um, Brooke is meeting with BJ tomorrow. Now, it is a mess down there, um, 'cause they are texturing walls and painting, but, um, what Brooke can do is find out some times next week, and we'll send them out to y'all, and you can meet us down there and just do a quick walk. It, it really makes you wrap your hands around it different. Um, there's a couple of things we're gonna change that already, like Shannon's, like, I don't know why we did this, but we shouldn't have, so we need to fix this, and we need to, you know, so it's a little hard, but it's easier to really see the scope of things when you can get in there and kick the dust around a little bit, so.
Anything else?
Nope.
If everybody's good, this meeting is adjourned.